Why don't we go ahead and start if you have a forum. Are you ready? All right.
Recording in progress.
This is the regular scheduled meeting of the Trinidad Planning Commission for Wednesday, September 18th, 2024. We do have a forum here with three commissioners here, so we'll begin. And we'll begin with the roll call.
Commissioner Slate.
I'm here.
Commissioner Cole.
Present.
Johnson.
Here.
And Commissioner Hopkins and Commissioner Hakenin are absent.
We do know that Commissioner Hakenin is not going to be here. We're still waiting for Commissioner Hopkins. Okay, the next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes for approval this evening. The first is May 15, 2024. Second is August 21st, 2024. Maybe we should take them separately and go and have any discussions on each one individually and come back and make a a motion on. With respect to the May 15. Minutes, any questions from the commissioners' clarifications?
I have no concerns about the minutes themselves, but I'm wondering as far as protocol goes, I'm expected to do myself, even though I stepped out for the recusal.
Well, you were here for them.
I was here most of it.
My understanding that even if you accuse yourself of part of a meeting, you can still approve the minutes. That's my understanding.
If that's the case, indeed, I have no problems with them.
I just had, again, not a question necessarily on the minutes, but I did wanted to wanted to know just for the public, the current status of the Vero Fiber Network installation.
They, the last I saw, there were still some comments the city engineer had on their encroachment permits on their plan. So they're they're doing some revisions on their plan. In terms of overall, though, they're starting work on the coastal section, starting at 299 and heading up north on 101. They're starting in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions on that set? Okay, moving on then to the minutes from August 21st. Any questions, clarifications, comments? Any questions, clarifications, comments requested from the public? All right, hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve both sets of minutes? I will move through the full sets of minutes. A little second. Second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
It can still approved.
Just real quick before you move on from the minute, you might notice the the may is in a slightly different format in terms of how the comments are written. The Gabe did the main minutes, and so that's more consistent with the city council minutes. If anybody has a strong preference, that'd be the most sufficient.
My preference would be whatever minimizes your workload or whoever's. Still maintain the accuracy of minutes.
Would agree with that. Good folks. All right, next item on our agenda is approval of the agenda. We have three items for public hearing, discussion, decision, and action tonight. Any questions or issues with the agenda? Do I hear approval for agenda? Question?
I've moved to approve the agenda as printed. And I'll second it.
Okay, given second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Approval of the agenda. Next item is items from the floor. Now, this is an opportunity from for everyone, anyone in the audience, both physically here and online to make comments or bring up issues to the commission, bearing in mind that any discussion should be on any item that is not on the agenda this evening. But any items for from the floor, from the public? Okay, hearing none.
Hello, this is, I'm not sure if so I have my hand up on the Zoom. My name is Tim Seward. I'm legal counsel for, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. My, I'm legal counsel for the Trinidad, for the Sherry Heights Indian Community, the Trinidad Rancheria. And I wanted to at least let the, let the the planning commission know that the Trinidad Rancheria is requesting that the city engage the Trinidad Rancheria government-to-government consultation regarding agenda items one through three. I recognize that those are items to be heard today, but I wanted to to make the statement early so that you were aware of it. The Trinidad Rancheria is a federally recognized tribe, as the commission may be well aware, located with trust lands located adjacent to and within the city, the boundary of the city of Trinidad. All three of these items appear to involve city activities related to a parcel known as the Shari Study Area, which is recognized as a tribal cultural resource. And item two actually states the, states the proposal that the temporary, proposal to extend the temporary closure of the Van White Trail to allow the city council to engage in consultation with the UROC tribe and the Shari Ancestral Society regarding the impacts to the trail, to the impacts of the trail to cultural resources. The Trinidad Rancheria has formally requested consultation with the city. And the Trinidad Rancheria is recognized as a California Native American tribe, traditionally and culturally affiliated with lands in and around the city of Trinidad, including the Shari Study Area. And the city's tribal consultation plan policy states that the city shall engage in consultation with all Native American tribes that are traditionally and culturally affiliated with the tribal cultural resources that may be affected by proposed or anticipated actions or activities of the city. And it also states that the city will seek to identify tribes that may be affected by the city-sponsored activities proposed or anticipated by the city and consult with potentially affected tribes at a time at a time early in the process that allows reasonable opportunity for the tribe to comment and participate. To date, the city has not engaged the Trinidad Rancheria in consultation regarding any of these proposed activities while it at least plans to engage the UROC tribe and the Shari Ancestral Society regarding the Van White Trail, item number two, regarding potential alternative access. And I brought this up now because I wanted to make the commission aware of the issue without having to go through that that statement three times. So I appreciate your accommodation to allow me to provide that regarding these items. And there will be some questions that I made regarding those items. I wanted to at least make the commission aware of the overriding the more comprehensive issue.
Thank you. Is it Mr. Stewart?
Seward, S E W A R D.
Your name is just off the screen, so I couldn't quite see.
I'm sorry.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other items from the floor for public comment? All right, hearing none. We'll move on then to our regular agenda. Maybe for the public record, maybe we could just quickly review, and if it's okay with the commissioners, quickly review the policy related to consultation. Which policy is that I'm drawing?
I don't have, so the city did adopt some consultation guidelines. Those are primarily focused on formal consultations in terms of SB 18 and A52. Two. One requires consultation on general plan updates and the other requires consultation on CECL documents. So that wouldn't apply to these situations. There is policy 69 that requires the Rancheria, among other entities, approval for ground disturbance, vegetation, or mobile and proposed uses within the Shari Study Area. Neither one or two are within the Shari Study Area. One is not adjacent to either, although it is adjacent to Rancheria property. Policy 69 would not. So in terms of the, I'm not aware of any legal requirements for consultation on any of these. Certainly, the city could still respond to requests and or with consultation.
Yeah, and I just wanted to clarify for everyone, you know, exactly where we stand with the consultation. And obviously, whatever we do tonight, as far as I recall, for each of these items can be appealed to the city council.
That's correct. At number three, you're not taking any action. It's just a
Sure, yeah, that's, yeah, thank you. So I just want to clarify where we're at with respect to our ability to move forward this evening. Okay. First item on our agenda this evening is the Daniels After the Fact Coastal Development Permit for Placement of a Dry Stack Block Wall.
This is a pretty simple project. It really just consists of, you know, those sort of landscaping, concrete blocks placed along the slope contour, along the top, edge of the top of the bluff on this property. But because it's, it's, that's a sensitive location, being within 50 feet of a bluff, on the face of a bluff, in an unstable area, it does require coastal development permit. The work has already occurred. It occurred in 2021. The city was alerted to work occurring and city staff came out and visited the site. Postal Commission staff were also alerted, and it was determined that a coastal development permit was required. It doesn't require a design review. I mean, it could be argued that maybe that a grading permit's required because grading within 50 feet of the left required or in an unstable area requires a permit, but we don't normally consider that this really was a very limited soil of disturbance in terms of placing these blocks along the eastern contour. So it's not any more soil disturbance than like we don't, we don't normally get that for grading. So so it shows a coastal development permit. As you probably know, we don't have specific findings just for coastal development permits. And so we just kind of looked at overall consistency with the LCP. It did, obviously, it took a bit of time to get a complete application in there. Various reasons for delays, but we have the application now, including a geologic report. So a geologist did go out and take a look at the wall, took a look at the site and recommended that the wall remain in place. And that some drainage improvements be be implemented so that storm water isn't directed over concentrated and directed over the bluff. So that has already been done as well. I did send out referrals for the project. City engineer just recognized the the geologist's recommendations and also recommended that we get some photos from the applicant just for the file of records. So we know what the existing conditions are. So it's been included as a condition of approval. And I talked to coastal commission staff. They, after seeing the geologist's report and site plan, they had no further concerns. It is in a culturally sensitive area, but no, no additional work is proposed as part of this permit. So everything is already done. So it was, it was pretty minimal soil disturbance. So there aren't a specific set of findings for you to approve. You know, the the project is not visible from the street. It is visible from the bay. It's not visible from Launcey Beach, but it's a concrete block wall. It's got vegetation growing over it at this point. And so it's, it doesn't present any significant visual changes. It's not affecting parking heights setbacks, any of those kind of things. I did look at the regulations for development on slopes and bluffs. And you can have fences and erosion-controlled structures and bluff, so that is consistent with those requirements. And so the project can be found to be consistent with Trinidad's LCP and other applicable regulations. So staff is recommending.
Thank you. Any questions from the commissioners to staff?
I just wanted to clarify that, I mean, to read through it, it sounded like one of the contributing factors was stormwater that was running down a sidewalk and then being dumped onto where the tree had fallen over. And I wanted to clarify that that stormwater issue has been I guess, or that stormwater has been dispersed so that way it's not concentrated.
That is my, that is my understanding. I believe the applicant is on the soon call and could maybe provide some additional clarification.
Hi, this is Dave Michael. Yes, I can. Basically, it wasn't from the sidewalk. I don't know, Gary may have, the geologists that are hired may have made some reference to that. But there was actually with the prior owner, they had put downspouts that were going down there. We could not see that it was buried. They have been terminated and taken to the other side of the property. But the the lines were running under the deck and we could not see them. So that is what's been terminated and from what we can tell was the main issue. As far as until we had that day that somebody had made a call, we didn't understand that we needed a permit. We thought it was more under the landscaping side, and I did talk to Gabe prior to buying the property. And then upon knowing that, the same day that we got flagged for concern, I actually went up to see Gabe and then he made a recommendation. And I believe that's when, I believe it was Ross, the mayor, and Trevor came out to the property the first time. So anyway, other than that, we've just been doing, we need to comply, hire the geologists and provide pot plans and things necessary to get to this point and also acquire the permit to make sure that we're complying.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying the water runoff situation and the backstory. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I have a question for Trevor. We somewhat recently revisited after the fact. Were they CDP guidelines or was it?
Just for any planning permit, and I I probably should have included those policies just as an attachment. Really, basically, it's, it's that you, you process the permits as if they hadn't occurred. You know, the applicant's still responsible for providing any studies, any follow-up remediation that's needed. And and then the the policy is to double the the permit fees for that.
We're consistent with those.
Yes.
And there is no remediation of any kind required?
No, nothing additional was recommended by the geologist. And so I think that's the bottom of that professional recommendation.
I didn't really have any other, any comments except for what has already been discussed, but I would maybe just like to, I wonder if it makes any sense to put together some sort of letter or information sheet to distribute to property owners in the city. This is the third after-the-fact CDP that we've seen in probably what's eight months or so. And it just seems like maybe there might be some misunderstanding or lack of understanding as to what is required and what you can do, not do, without a CDP. And I don't know, just as a suggestion, maybe it would be worthwhile to put together something that just said, hey, no matter what you're doing, think about it. And then if you have any questions, please get to City Hall and try to resolve it. It just seems like while it doesn't necessarily cause any more effort on staff's part because you're doing it basically as a, as a brand new CDP, it is somewhat problematic for property owners. And but maybe to a slight extent, first thing. It would be useful to have something, but that's just a suggestion. A condition of approval or anything like that. Okay, any other questions or comments from commissioners? I'll open it up to the public for any public comment. Okay, hearing none, I'll bring it back. Any further discussion?
I mean, I will say that I guess I want to recognize that you know, in most, well, sort of to your I guess, letter, your suggestion of sending out a letter to the city's residents. I mean, this project, in most parts of the city, would be totally allowable, right? It's just because they're on or close to the block edge. And I think, you know, that's definitely like an interesting art of coastal, coastal act, right, that requires permits for any ground of storm that's near or on the bluff. It sounds like maybe the applicant got mixed reviews from city staff. I mean, that's certainly written in the staff report, I guess. I don't know if we want to entertain not doubling the permit fee for this, for this permit due to that, or sort of how well-founded those mixed, mixed reviews were. I guess, yeah. How well-founded those, those mixed comments that the applicant got from city staff are as to whether or not they did or did not need a permit.
Where are you referring, just so I can
Give me a second. Let's see, page two, two of six, staff comments. First, at the end of the first line, or excuse me, third line down, the building official determined that, oh, I guess maybe I misread it. Building officials determined that no building permit was necessary. All right, sorry, I guess I misread that. I guess I misread that to to think that they'd been told that they didn't need a permit.
Yeah, I think, sorry, it's my understanding, this is consistent with our precedent that we set for dealing with after-the-fact CDP. So I see no reason to change at this point.
Yeah, because the work had started, occurred when the building official did go out there and said, no permit was necessary. But but we have run into that situation in the past, you know, with the the steps of the lighthouse. I can't remember the order of operations there. With that one, they might have been told they don't need a building permit even before they started work, but then no one asked me. So I did, I did reach out to the the building official to provide some guidance on where things require coastal development permits. So he's, he's more aware and can refer people to me, even if he tells them they don't need a bit later.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, do I hear a motion? I'll do it. Based on application materials, information, and findings included in the staff report, and based on public testimony, I find that the project is consistent with the Trinidad LCP and other applicable regulations. And I move to adopt the information and findings in the staff report and approve the project as described in the staff report and as conditioned therein.
I'll second.
Moving second and further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Best of your day. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Michael?
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is extension of the temporary closure of the Van Wood Trail. Yes. Yes.
I'm so looking forward to this. So, you know, I, I will say that I really expect this to be the last extension or temporary closure on the trail. And I think that the city council has appointed two members to meet with the UROC tribe and the ancestral society. You know, the reason it was with those two entities is because those are the two entities that have expressed objection to the trail. The Rancheria has not. But, you know, they, they did, the Rancheria did request consultation on the vegetation removal on the Axalingrin Trail. So I believe that will be on the next council agenda, so they could add, you know, Van, Van Wick to that government-to-government discussion. You know, it's really, I think the the insurance agent will be here tomorrow to take a look at some of these trails and I think the school as well. But, you know, the conditions haven't changed in terms of that that trail is not insured. So the the city doesn't have any liability coverage should someone hurt themselves on that trail. So it's important to keep it closed. It is, it's not in, in the Shari Study Area. It's not in an area that's subject to policy 69. But as you know, the, there have been objections to repairs and having the trail at all. So, you know, I think the city council really needs to have those government-to-government consultations so that they can understand the concerns and make an informed decision whether to move forward with a simple repair. I mean, a repair of that would be pretty simple in terms of just putting wood, wood steps with, with rebar holding on to go up and down the dip. So so that would be pretty straightforward. And but I think that consultation needs to occur, and then the city council needs to decide whether they're gonna move forward with repairs or permanently close the trail. So like I said, I, I expect this to be the last temporary. Before with repairs or permanently close the trip. So, like I said, I I expect this to be the last temporary. But this was in terms of the permit and the process tonight. The Planning Commission in in March did narrowly approve a six month temporary. Closure of the trail, you know, we're likely continuing to meet with. Coastal Commission staff monthly, they. They. They seem to recognize, you know, the thing that the city is making progress and that these things take time. You know, they were big advocates for improvements to Edward Street, which the city is is currently implementing. Sort of mitigate that closure, but also, you know, to to make people safer on Edward Street as well. So the Planning Commission approved the temporary closure, a CEP in March. That expires October twenty second, I think it is. They, the the approval did include a condition that. The. Will expire in six months unless an extension is granted by the Planning Commission based on the need for more time to obtain funding and referrals for. Repair and access alternatives. If the Biden Commission finds that substantial progress has been made in turn time. So, you know, we have, we have met several times with the Ancestral Society and the management team to discuss repair options. We've met with up slope property owners, so we're looking at moving it up slope. You know, I'd say at this point we have. Exhausted those, and so it comes down to the. So. So in order to allow that to occur, city staff was recommending.
Questions for staff from the commissioners?
I guess. There's definitely a lot of talk in. Or I guess I've been this report, right? There's a lot of and previous reports, there's a lot of discussion about what we think the coastal commission staff. Slash coastal commission thinks or wants or. Whatever they're thinking, I guess I'm. In my opinion, I don't want that, whatever they're thinking, who people who don't live here or they live here, they don't come to these meetings. Like, I don't want that to impact the way that we're thinking about these projects because. If they think a certain way, then, you know, it can. Decisions can be elevated to this to the coastal commission and then they can actually have their turn to speak, but I don't really want this. I mean, I understand that they're considering these these things, but I don't really think we should be considering their hypothetical opinions about. Projects. So I guess I just wanted to make, put that out there. And with regard to the. I mean, I guess basically what it boils down to is the trail is currently closed because it's uninsurable. And it's not currently closed because. DAS and the Yurok Tribe want it closed. I mean, that's. Is I correct on that opinion or that statement, I guess?
I mean, I would say that is the primary reason that the city closed the trail in the first place. Part of the reason that it hasn't been repaired yet is because of the objections.
I guess, so with that light. I mean, I don't like making, I don't like like the sort of hypothetical threat. Of somebody suing the city over tripping on the trail. Hurting themselves. Like, I don't like that running our government either. I mean. On the flip side. The city has kept the trail closed since twenty twenty. Technically should have been legal, which also exposes the city to. Legal liability should somebody choose to sue the city over being keeping the trail closed. So I guess it seems a little bit. Disingenuous to the city to say, well, we don't want this like legal exposure here, but we'll tolerate some other legal exposure there. Especially when one of those is. Clearly benefits the community, which would be having the trail open. And all and like only doesn't benefit somebody who gets hurt on the trail. It's hypothetically may or may not happen. I understand Trevor's opening point regarding sort of where this this. Process is heading and decisions that are going to need to be made in the next six months, hopefully. And. I guess my. Currently where I'm at is, I think I could. But to extend the closure, but I would want to condition it upon the fact that the city continues to maintain the trail. More so than they have been doing since it's been closed during the closure. And I guess I'd, to that end, I say that just because the trail is closed doesn't mean the city can't maintain. So that would mean. You know, weed whacking the grass that's approaching on the trail. My air improvements to the trail as needed should something arise at this point. So I would want to condition it upon that. Because I don't want to just see this trail continue to slip away while. We're thinking about what to do with it.
You have a comments?
So I'm like, I like our most recent discussion of trail closures. This is. Not a new application. This is in fact an extension of the existing application.
Yes, yeah, so this would be an extension. So. All planning commission actions are appealable to the city council, but this is not a new CDP that would be appealable to the coastal commission.
I I guess I did have a question in that too. Does that mean like? Any extension is not appealable? I mean, can you just appeal whatever you want?
You know, I am not a necessary person clear and I. No, but I mean, and I have this question for coastal commission staff because so the the first time. So this condition we originally had on the Axalinrin Trail closure. And the first time we extended it, I I sent notices and I sent out a notice of action to the coastal commission. They said. Oh, no, this isn't a a new permit. It's not appealable to us. And then then I started asking the question, well. What if we start extending it indefinitely? And I didn't get a clear answer on that. So I heard of it is. The way the conditions worded, and I guess. I potentially could have worded it so that it could have been done on a staff level. I guess that's what they do more at the coastal commission. But I don't, I'll give you that responsibility. So part of it is the way the conditions worded. And I imagine that if the city just kept doing extension after extension app, then. The coastal commission enforcement unit would probably step.
I have any, I have any additional questions for staff? I just. Yeah, I found myself falling into this trap the last time we had a discussion about. Trails, which is the often incorrect assumption that there is nefarious intention somewhere, right? And I. I believe based on conversations we've had repeatedly that there doesn't seem to be. Any of that here, right? Like more conversations we have with more of the involved entities. The great appreciation have for, of course, the complexities, but the fact that nobody is really truly operating nefariously. And I think that there's a lot of fear in town of permanent closure. I wouldn't be surprised if there's also quite a bit of fear of that site being. Much more developed as it was maybe intended to be several years ago. So I sort of understand it would be an interpretation of the various intents. On either side and. I think that's. The way that we combat those assumptions is by having, you know. Open conversations about what each party wants. And of course, we are not subject. In this condition to those conversations. And so, you know, I I. Unsurprisingly, we find ourselves in this position where we are trying to make a decision with an incomplete set of facts. Without details of of what each party truly wants. And it's really hard. It makes it easier to rely on the assumption, the often false assumption that there's something nefarious happening. Yeah, I I don't think it's ever really truly been the case. That's my rambling way of saying, you know, I feel like we don't have all the necessary information. That's a present, it's an awful idea, but this is for the first time in this new day.
Good one. Yes. Yeah, I guess my initial reaction to this was to do what we did with the. Axel Lumburn Memorial Trail, which was to outright reject CP. And. So to speak, push it on to the city council for them to take. And hopefully with that action, there was a little bit of activity, I believe, and I think everyone was working very hard. All parties seem to be working hard to move forward with that one. But I. Kind of agree with you, Chris, and this is a little bit different, slightly different. And I do appreciate the comments that Mr. Seward made earlier. And I do know, and I don't recall exactly when or where, but I do know that the Rancharia has requested consultation, government to government. Consultation on this and several other issues, as I recall. And that if that hasn't happened, I think it's only fair that 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 request. Follow through with and. And give all parties an opportunity to. Work out hopefully in the next six months. We're gonna trust staff to say this is the last time we're gonna look at this. Yeah, okay. It's very frustrating for me because, you know, the the public continues to raise the issue that, yes. The city has closed the trail formally and yet the trail is still used. And that is issues, that brings up issues in and of itself, which are crazy. But. And yet, you know, we are five years into this and still don't have a solution. And I I really, really appreciate the public's frustration with this whole process. It's just. unconscionable. However, I do understand that there are a lot of entities that are involved in this and. Sometimes these things take a great deal of time to work out. As I said, I was reluctant to approve any further extension, but given the. Given the circumstances and the hopefully the commitment from city council. And the other entities involved to try to reach a solution within the next six months, I'm willing to. Grant this extension. Any further items before we go to the public?
I just wanted to clarify that. This is due to my lack of this unfamiliarity with the government to government consultation process, but. As I recall, during. The council meeting we attended because they were reviewing. Now, they were reviewing the appeal of our decision to. About to extend one of these closures. At that meeting, the Rancharia requested a government to government meeting, so we're talking about six weeks ago, two months ago, right? And as we continue to be curious about timelines and concerned about timelines, I'm just sort of curious, maybe Eli and. Can chime in here, but to what extent have we, as a city, attempted to schedule those meetings? Has there been? Tangible progress towards gaining more insights while the parties involved?
It is going to be on the agenda on the twenty fourth to have a G two G with the Rancharia. We, other than their comment at the meeting. I got the impression they were gonna formally send a request. We never received that one. We're still, we're still impotent on the agenda. Since they have requested. And then as far as the other one, we're in a matter of trying to get the. Parties together, meaning the two council members and the Yurok Council and then also. The Yurok Ancestral Society, you know, individually to get the schedules together so we could have that those meetings.
And and Eli, just just for the record, who are the two city council members that have been assigned to the G two G?
Yeah, for the one with the Yurok Tribe and the Yurok Ancestral Society, it's Steve Blattwick and Jack West.
But I know that syncing up schedules is difficult. That's been, I mean, remind me of the date of that meeting or remind me of the date where those where those individuals were appointed. It's been. Six weeks plus.
I I believe it was in the August meeting, but I have to check.
And at least in months, yeah. And the thing, yeah, I mean, I. Agree with you, your frustration there, Chris.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily saying that it's frustration, it's just, you know, I worry that. Time slips away as it tends to do, maybe. But this process of scheduling a meeting takes five and a half more months than we find ourselves. You know, in this exact same position. Or may not be here, it sounds like, if that happens. But, you know, it's possible. So that's my concern is there's no guarantee that anything happens in the next six months.
And and I guess I would, yes, I resonate with that. And I guess my only other comment would be that. The public has raised a lot of issues and justifiably so. I think the public needs to go to the city council meetings and make their feelings very, very clear. And to put the pressure on the city council, we we unfortunately can't do much other than just extend the CDP. And the public needs to raise this as a very, very important issue to the city council and. Hold the city council. Responsible for moving forward with this and making certain that it happens. So, yeah, it is frustrating. It it really is and. I was laughing when we said six months from here. Now, this will be the last one. My bet a quarter. Any other comments, questions for staff? At this point, I'll open up to the public for public comment. I request that the public. Keep their comments to three minutes unless you feel that you need more. We can discuss that and public comment.
Press canning, four sixty two Ocean Avenue. This is not my first rodeo when it comes to this issue and unsurprisingly. I'm still very much in favor of keeping the Van Wijk Trail open. And I think probably the best reason for that is included in your. In your package. At. Page thirty six.
Beginning of the staff report.
Where it talks about that this. That closure that is being asked for will expire after six months, et cetera, et cetera. But it could be extended if the planning commission finds that substantial progress has been made in the interim time period. Shouldn't you be considering that tonight? Because the six month extension is being requested. And I would like somebody to identify for me in concrete terms what has been accomplished. What has been accomplished? Aside from just more posturing and the same delay, circular arguments, uh. It's just what you need to do. Is the same thing you did. With the Axel Lumber Memorial Trail, where you courageously. Refused to grant another extension. And said enough is enough. This is getting ridiculous. And this trail has been closed for five years. It's being subjected to the death of a thousand cuts. Anybody who thinks that this is just gonna be, uh, another six months closure. I'd like to say you believe in Santa Claus or something. The Van Wijk Trail is not part of the Churai Study Area. Therefore, the Churai management team should not be talking about it. It's outside the charge of what the city council. Assigned to do to advise them about, number one. Number two, the foot traffic does not exacerbate the erosion issue. It's things like the two giant concrete blocks that have been sitting down there for ten years or so. That, you know, could have been removed, should have been removed. Immediately when they were placed there. All that extra weight on the trail is pushing it down the hill. And those are the kind of things that. You know, are being completely ignored, uh. You know, there's no doubt that the Native American people were treated very badly historically here and all over this country. But two wrongs don't make a right. And it's wrong to. Punch the people that are here now and use the, uh, trail. For something they had nothing to do with and have no way to, uh, redress. And if, you know, the city could just do some basic, simple pick and shovel repairs. If the insurance company sign off, reopen the trail. If any cultural objects are discovered during that process, they can be preserved and reburied. As this is done customarily everywhere when there's projects that might impact cultural resources. But if cultural resources are something other than, uh, objects. If the whole existence of the city of Trinidad is an affront to cultural resources. Then that concept is being very badly abused. And we need to move away from that direction as soon as possible. And one final thing, if you do approve, um, this request. If there's any cultural monitor reports that get done in conjunction with anything. They should be, uh, it should be understood that a copy will be provided to the city. Where they can be kept as documents that are not subject to the Public Records Act. Therefore, if any cultural resources are identified. Their end, they will be confidential and the secrecy can be preserved. On the other hand, if there are no cultural resources identified, that fact should be, um. Available to the public. So I'm asking you to. Deny the extension just as you did with the Axel Lumber Memorial Trail.
Bryce? Further length discussion?
It's on the screen, but ten minutes.
Mr. Seward.
Yes, thank you. Um, well, thank you very much. I appreciate the comments of Chairman and Commissioner Stay and, uh. Support of, of, uh, providing the, the equal, um. Consultation, government, government consultation with the Trinidad Rancheria. Uh, that's much appreciated. I also appreciate the, uh, the background that. Uh, the plan, the city planner provided. That was helpful. Um. So, uh, it's my understanding that, uh, if, if, if this goes forward. With the extension that the Trinidad Rancheria will, will be consulted, uh, in a manner that's equal to, to the J R tribe. And T A S. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The other comments. Right, and I'll bring it back to the, uh, commission for any other discussion or suggestions. So I, I, I certainly appreciate. Mr. Kenny's comments and, and like I said, and I started tonight, I really. Felt like maybe the first thing we should do is just reject this. I said that earlier. Just reemphasizing it, but I'm wondering. I don't know, I'm spitballing here, guys, but I was wondering, what if we just said we're only going to, uh, approve it for three months? Say that's it, after three months. That viable solution, does it do anything for us?
Uh, I don't really think that does anything for us.
No squeals of delight?
Okay, I think it, I think we would just come back in three months and it would be.
I think you're probably.
Same right conversation. I think you're probably right.
I, I'm just looking for. Something, I, I, I'm just trying to get, get off top dead center, you know, any way that we possibly can. This is just. Difficult. Uh, did I see you write down something for another condition?
No, I mean, if you, I mean. I was gonna suggest you, I mean, you could remove the condition allowing the extension. I mean, that's one thing. And then if it comes.
That's, you're talking about subparagraph one.
Yes.
Yes.
Um, and then, um, Tristan mentioned adding that condition about continuing to maintain.
That's what I was looking for, yeah.
I do not have the wording of that. Um, you know, the, the waterline project is probably about to. Before it, so there will be some work over there. Um, so it might be something about. You know, keeping it from being overgrown and not, not. Doing additional damage to the trail or, or something like that. Um, you know, I, I will. I will, um, definitely send an email to Steve and Jack after this meeting. I mean, cause I. I really don't wanna, that neither of them are. Uh. With their terms, but, um, so they need to get this consultation done. Uh. Where we will be in this situation again, at that point, too. So, um, I, I will, I will. Ugh them about making sure they make that.
Sorry, I've forgotten that part of it. I guess my first thought is it would be very useful if at the twenty-fourth meeting of the city council. Since we know that we only have two candidates for two openings. That essentially they know who this, the council will be in November. So I'm wondering, Eli, I'm just throwing this out there that at that point. Assuming that very little progress will be made. Uh, with the two currently appointed commit, uh, council members for the government to government consultations. That, um, the city council readdressed that issue and come up with a new plan. Make it so clear.
When you say readdress the issue.
Well, okay, bottom line is that Steve and Jack will not be on the. Uh, city council come November. And that only gives them literally a month.
Come to any. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, okay, you're right, January, okay, but still, I don't, I. Question motivation.
The G to G meeting with the Churai and the, uh, Yurok Tribe i- is intended, intended to be. Basically one meeting. I mean, if they offer another one, fine, but usually our consultations are just one meeting. And then the intent is for the two council members to bring back whatever they are able to ascertain. That to the whole council in closed session so that the whole council could talk about it.
So then let's, I guess I misunderstood. You're saying that the government to government meeting will occur on the twenty-fourth?
No, uh, no, what I'm saying is, uh. The, the two, uh, members of the council, Stephen Jack. Uh, when they do meet with the Churai and the, uh, Yurok Tribe. Generally, it's usually one meeting. Then after that, after that meeting, then they will come back to a future council meeting. Uh, which would probably be October or November, or November. And they'll report to the council, and at that point, then their job was done.
I, I would point out, I, I guess I see a flaw in that and. But then, but then what about the discussions of the trail? How do they participate in the discussions of the long-term decision on the trail? Because if they were the ones who participate in the government to government meetings, they're the ones who understand the cultural impacts and then they're gone. And then, uh.
Yeah, no, no, they, that's why they would then share it with the councils. Uh, but the main reason for it is to find out, is there a path forward? And, and that's what they're gonna try to ascertain, you know, at least input regarding, is there a path forward? And what would that path be? Meaning, in the existing trail or up slope or whatever. So hopefully we'll find some daylight, they'll say, yes, we're amenable to some kind of. A trail that would be open in a particular spot, meaning existing spot or up slope.
And then just to clarify, in my mind, uh. Are you still looking for a formal request from the Rancheria for government to government consultation on this?
No, it's, it's on the agenda.
What's, what, then I'm confused. What's on the agenda?
Yeah, so, but what we do is when we put it on the agenda, the council picks two people to represent the council. At the G to G with the Rancheria. Uh, we're avoiding the issue with the Brown Act where you have a standing committee.
Yes, I understand.
Right.
Okay, I, uh, and I now appreciate a separate meeting. Okay, thank you.
Right.
All right. Any, let's see, where were we? Public comment? I don't know, we brought it back from public.
I mean, it seems like we're really getting into the weeds of city council. Politics. Uh, are we still in public?
Mr. Seward, is your hand still up?
Uh, Chairman, I, I just was wanting to respond if, if possible, and I, I realized that I've, I've had one comment, but. Uh, with regard to, uh, city manager's comments, I. And, and some of the discussion, I just wanted to make sure that the, the city council will be appointing two. Uh, city council members to meet with the Trinidad Rancheria and the government to government relations and that will, or consultation. And that that will, uh. Include, among other things, the discussion of the, uh, the Van Wijk, uh. Trail and the alternatives and, and the discussion of the alternatives and possibly moving the trail somewhere else is. In part why the, the Trinidad Rancheria is, is interested in, uh, in the, in, in requesting the, uh, consultation. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, okay. Um. Bring it back out of public comment, again, back to the commissioners. Further thoughts?
It, it remains clear to me, I mean, following. That this conversation has gone, you know, reference of, of cultural resources discussed in G to G meetings. Coastal Commission opinions on the matter, insurers. There's obviously a lot of parties involved and, man, it feels like the city council is a better. Better body to have discussions when there's that many entities involved. And I really truly feel uncomfortable making any decision. Without an understanding of everybody's concerns. I don't think it's gonna happen in three months, three to six months. Um. I will say that. I'm like with the A M T, um. While it does seem likely, uh, or even certain, that there's cultural resources in this vicinity. They probably, in my very limited understanding, are not under immediate threat, so I don't necessarily feel the pressure to. Keep the trail closed to prevent damage or theft of those resources. Um, at the same time, I, I, uh. There's the whole endurance thing, which is totally out of our hands, and I'm sure there's something appropriate for us to be considering, right? So I guess it all comes down to a discussion we've had a bunch of times before, which is, you know, what are the consequences of, of our votes tonight? You know, if we, if we abstain, I mean, can we, can we, uh? What the consequences, can we take no action on the item? That's, that's historically been presented as something we could do, but I don't see it in your list of, of stuff.
You would need to, you could take an action to continue it. To a future meeting if you need more information, so then list what information. Um, but you can't just decide not to take it.
I think we had that discussion with the Axel Lumbin. Trail as well. I think we agreed that we had to make a decision way together.
And I, to be honest, I, uh, I'm not quite certain yet, but I envision possibly abstaining myself. And what happens if everybody abstains? We just keep taking votes until something happens, you know, like what's, what's the direction of this meeting?
Now have you heard, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, Bryce, very quickly. We'll open it back up for public comment.
In my opinion, any commissioner can abstain from a vote for any reason. They want, but you don't have to state a reason for a state simply abstain. And procedural. Uh. Ratifications are that, or what they are. Needs three votes to pass a motion. One person abstaining the vote, there's, there's not a majority favor of the motion, the motion finished.
Well, I'll take issue with that because we do have a majority, so it would be if, if one commissioner. Uh, abstained and was unanimous for the other two, one way or the other, that's a decision.
Excuse me, I misspoke on that point.
Okay, I understand. Just wanted to clarify.
My point is that you don't need. Permission to abstain.
Got it. I understand, I, I'll.
There should, there should be a good reason, of course, but. It's a procedural base, you know, part of the fabric of our democratic process.
Thank you for the clarification.
If I might respond, I guess, I was not looking for permission to abstain. I was seeking, uh, sort of information of the implications of a potential abstention.
Got it. Thank you.
That, I mean, I know we have procedures if, you know, every commissioner has a, if a majority of the commissioners have a conflict of interest, there are procedures. In terms of if every commissioner wants to abstain, I, I. I don't know if it automatically goes to the city council or what.
Um, I, uh, am just where I'm at right at this point, I kind of feel about. Deleting. The paragraph one. Um. And basically say that, um. The C D P will expire after six months. And. It's my, it's my understanding that if the C D P expires, then we would have to have another C D P.
That's correct.
So. Rather than extend this forever. Uh, I, I'm just suggesting this, you can. Just kind of decide whether that makes sense. Uh I, I'm just suggesting this, you can just kind of decide whether that makes sense. It's just extended for six months, end of story, and if we have to go further, it's a new CDP and we'll have to go. And provide the, the, the new set of information that would give us a determination of whether or not it's acceptable. Accept the. But it doesn't give us this out here that uh, that uh, that if there are. Substantial progress that has been made, that we're obligated to continue because substantial progress is in the eye of the beholder. Who knows what that means at this point?
Well, we should probably talk about it, right?
Well, that's why I just wanted to take it out. I'm willing to listen.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, uh. First of all, I, as you know, I will be retiring soon, but I think it just gives an incentive for. And you know, whoever is in my place in addition to the council and staff to try to find. Uh some funding and or explore repair and access alternatives. I mean, that's the whole purpose of our discussion today is, is, you know, you want something to happen. And uh, and, and I think having it in there because it's saying unless an extension is ready. Based upon the need for the funding and exploring the repair and access, access alternatives. So I mean, it'll still come back to you, but at that point, you, you basically have given the message like, this is it unless you guys do something. Between now and when the six months expire.
I, I, I understand that, but that's been the condition. This entire time, and so here we are. And that if you take that, I guess if I take that condition to be serious, then. But then it's impossible for me to, to grant another extension, right? Because we don't have like, there, we've, we don't have good alternatives for repair options, there's nothing on the table. You know, we haven't even had a meeting, the government, government meeting yet, and. So that, I mean, that alone, sort of. You know, as, as Richard said, it's in the eye of the beholder. Some people would argue that maybe there has been substantial progress made, but. It's pretty easy for me to argue that there's not.
Well, the, the net result, you know, is uh, we haven't been able to obtain any real commitment. But uh, there's been a lot of work trying to work with the individual parties. But at this point, the council says, okay, you know, we have alternatives, one alternative is. To find a way to open it, the other alternative is uh to follow what the uh Coastal Commission had said. Is that if you can't reopen it, then to permanently close it. So the council is mostly trying to do what maybe could be phrases like last ditch effort. Okay, what can we do to get this thing open? Uh and, and that's why I'm hoping that there's some option between the existing. Uh path of the trail and the up slope path where maybe some distinction could be made. By the native community saying, uh, if you do it this way, it could be acceptable. So uh, we, we, we felt like we were making some inroad and then we felt like we weren't and. We're trying to push it to the point of, okay, let's figure this out and can we find a solution? Cause I, I know that, you know, the public would like to see it open and I like to see it open. Uh mainly because it does offer a nice view. Uh and, and it would be nice to have the public be able to experience that. But on the other hand, with the insurance issue, uh we have to somehow navigate the public through their free, you know, uh safety. And if, if we can't get them through there safely, then we're not going to be insured and that's not going to be beneficial for the city. Uh and the insurance is tied to the fact of making an improvement that could make it safe. They're fine with ensuring that we can go ahead and find a safe path through there. But uh they feel that it's an unsafe path right now.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Any other thoughts?
I mean, as this discussion has, has gone on, I'm, I guess moving closer to your initial thought of just denying it. And someone wants to uh feel it at the city council, they can do that or not, but. I, I, I think it's, again, it's important for everyone, city council and. One who might attend the city council meeting to, to. Should this be appealed um? To hear our frustration with the situation and like. And. And the residents' frustration with the situation. It's ea, I think it's easy for the city council to, to not bring this top, to top of mind, even if. You know, it's sort of agendized in a. Sort of side agenda way, manner, um. Having it an actual, making it an action item, excuse me, um, should someone appeal it. You know, forces them to, to think about it and, you know. This happens again in six months and it comes to us again in six months and we deny it again in six months and then it just keeps happening and. And hopefully they'll get a little frustrated too.
Good ones.
And uh regarding your, so you got some of the way, but the past paragraph, I'm trying to put myself in the shoes of six months ago, Chris. And remember that we were especially frustrated then too, right? And that paragraph was really something that we collectively decided must be in this uh, in this private, in this, in this closure. If we were to approve that closure then. And so I'm very reluctant now to remove what we envisioned as our only teeth at that time. And I think that, you know, we, we did give ourselves a hell, we said that if substantial progress has been made. They can extend it. Like, and I agree with you that, that's in the eye of the beholder, I don't, I don't dispute that there has been communication among interested parties. But there's been no plan presented, but I'm sure there's a concept of a plan, right, like it's uh. Yeah, we'll have to basically hand it, we've got some communications from the D S that I think is helpful and uh insightful and gives me reason for optimism. But we have a little less on that.
Yeah, it goes back to what your comment was, is let's define what progress is. Yeah, I appreciate that.
Trying to make a motion. Uh based on application materials and information included in this staff report and based on public testimony, I. Find the project is inconsistent with the city certified LCP and other football regulations. And I move to deny the project as described in the staff report.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Uh is it, is that procedurally okay? I mean, I will second it if, if, as far as the tangled web of appeals versus. Whatever, like I would second it.
You can second it and still not vote for it.
Yeah, I guess that's, I'm sorry, a poor job of the. Of verbalizing this, I mean. Is in essence. Motion. To reject the project to just. I just really don't want to close the trail, not to extend it, I mean, is there, is there a sort of a tangled web of verbiage that we need to worry about?
No, I think we're, I think it's pretty clear denying it would be. Not approving the extension of the closure, so then the closure would expire on October twenty second or whatever that day is. And we will follow the same process as would Axel Lindgren Trail and ask the city council.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Right, uh all in favor to approve the motion to. Not extend the CDP. Say hi. Those opposed? So two to one, the motion passes as modified. Okay, thank you all for that discussion, appreciate it. And um thank you staff for all the insight.
Yeah, I mean, for a little bit, um with the ALNT, I believe we have to provide some justification for. Is that true here as well?
Yes, I, I believe.
It's been five years.
I, I think your justification is that it's not, there hasn't been substantial progress, that's really.
Yeah, and I mean, going back to, again, to be consistent with previous decisions of mine, there's been no maintenance here, so I don't think it's consistent with policy sixty four.
Very good, very good discussion, thank you. Okay, um. We're ready to move on to item three? Item three, uh monthly update on the Axel Lindgren Memorial Trail closure and progress to date for the open trip.
Which years, um, oh yeah, so uh. Last month, the planning commission approved the CDP for vegetation removal along the new proposed alignment. Um however, prior to that, um the city needs to um conduct consultation with the rancheria. Um and with the rancheria's approval per policy sixty nine, so as we discussed, um. The next, next week's council meeting, um they will be appointing two city council members to conduct that consultation. Um in the meantime, um. City staff have been in contact with RCA and ancestral society, the ancestral society obviously wants to be on site while work occurs. Um and the city is working on a contract um with RCA so that um. They can be ready to, to move forward once we get from entry as.
Any questions, comments, clarifications from the commissioners?
Uh I do have a, I think, quick question. That letter that you sent to the. State store preservation officer outlined exclusively removal of the vegetation along the proposed new route.
Yes. I think. Trimming vegetation hasn't ever been something subject to policy sixty nine where this is actual removal down to the ground of. It's a little different than like the upper cutting back of blackberries or some of the upper part or something like that. Yeah.
Vegetation removal is usually either at the ground or below ground, if that's, I mean, I don't want to get into.
There's nothing, nothing necessarily. There's nothing, well, at least in our local. Where, what ordinance is that? Where's vegetation removals defined?
It, it, I think it is, yes, I believe it is defined in the use of vegetation permits.
We expressed this concern during our, during our previous meeting and just wanted to clarify that there's nothing at the moment stopping the city from trimming back blackberries or. Should any city employee deem it necessary? Removal of like overhanging branches or thistles or conditions that are threatening.
And I would suggest that it will need to be trimmed in order to get access.
Got questions, comments for staff? Okay, then we'll uh open it up for public comment. Any public comment, either here or online? Hey, I'm not, oops, am I? You're on mute, Mr. Seward, Seward, excuse me.
Oh, thank, thank you, no, uh, sorry about that, I, I'll be, I'll be short here, I. My understanding then is that there is consultation, uh government to government consultation that's planned for, for this uh item. With the Trinidad Rancheria and that the um. The city council will be uh selecting two city council members to meet with the Trinidad Rancheria. Has that council dessert, has a, a date been set for that consultation? I heard the twenty fourth and I didn't know what. What that was a reference to, if, if that's when the consultation is, is scheduled for.
I'll let our city manager answer that question.
Yeah, the twenty fourth is next Tuesday, that's a council meeting. And at that point, the council will choose two council members to represent the city at the G to G. And then after that, we would coordinate a date with the rancheria.
Okay, thank you.
You got the public comment? All right, hearing done, I'll bring it back to the commissioners, any other uh questions, comments? Uh just, just a clarification is, it's in your staff report, but I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that uh. Our original uh decision uh to reject the. The CDP will be appealed to the coastal commission and they expect to see that in November.
Oh, yes, thank you, um, and I, um. The, will the, is the ancestral society going to be presenting GHD's report next week? The city council?
Yeah, I, I've sent the, sent the email, then they uh asked more questions and then I sent another email. Today telling them, you know, uh we need to know if you're going to do it. I says, you either can do it the twenty fourth or the eighth are, are my suggestions, so we'll find it. But yes, I haven't gotten a definitive answer yet.
And yes, so the city councils. Um revert, reverse the planning commission's um denial. And that was appealed to the coastal commission. Um I have transmitted the local record to them. Um and they hope to have considered that um. At the November meeting, now how that process works, um, you're probably aware, but. Their, their first action is just to consider whether the appeal has merit, basically. So does the appeal raise a substantial issue? Um so that would be um what they would be deciding on. And then if it does, if they find that it does, then they. Will have a full hearing on project at a later time.
Where's the number meeting?
They, I mean, usually they have a North Coast meeting in September, so yeah, probably it's not around here, but they um. Everything is uh virtual as well, um and they have a process by which you, you do have to, if you want to speak, you have to sign up. Ahead of time, but things are, I think instructions are pretty clear on the website.
Uh my, my desire in bringing that up, or my reason for bringing it up is just uh. Wanted to clarify that. This does not slow up anything that the council is doing, in other words, I hope nobody is waiting for. A hearing at the, at the coastal commission level, is that my understanding?
That's correct, so this, that is separate from the vegetation removal permit, hold out the vegetation.
Good, thank you.
And I will also mention that I included, I believe, all the commissioners as speakers during the hearings. So as interested parties, so you should all be getting notices. Okay.
The other, I have one last question, which is, uh in the conversations with RCA and others, has there been discussion of. Getting down to the beach, the butt? There is, I'm just wondering about specific topic has been. That discussed.
I'm not aware, um, but I think it would basically be the same, cause we did, you know, in April or May, we. They met with city staff and. Public works went and trimmed the trail so that they could get down and take a look at it in order to provide them an. Estimate of the work they were going to do, so. We have done that, I assume.
So the city engineer from G H D, Steve Allen, uh, who would more than likely be. Uh, in designing whatever the access will be from the new trail to the beach. Uh, he said that, uh, once the vegetation is removed, he wanted to be able to see what the path looks like at that point. And then come up with some kind of a plan. And, and also the Chariah Ancestral Society is very interested in being. Uh, and, and this is something that they echo quite often, being involved in the planning. Rather than, they don't like it when someone comes up and says, you know, this is the plan, what do you think of? They want to be involved in the planning. So, so the attempt is. We want to keep them involved so that we can continue to make some progress. Uh, rather than having them feel like they're letting go.
Actually, you know, may I ask you a quick question, um. The fencing along the beach never went up this summer, is that true? Last summer, as a result of our decisions, protective fencing went up from roughly Memorial Day to Labor Day. And it didn't go back up?
Yeah, it didn't go back up. Steve Allen and myself, uh, were down there and, and, uh. We, uh, also had a third person from G H D present. And, uh, looked at everything and, uh, it seemed as far as the concerned areas, uh. Do not appear, at, at least some vegetation is growing in and everything, so it's not the same issue that existed before. Uh, the other thing is in the summer, actually, because vegetation grows, it starts covering the fence. Uh, you know, part of the concern was when, before the vegetation starts. Uh, but, uh, but yeah, in, in the analysis from G H D, they felt that, uh. It, it was fairly, looked fairly good and, and therefore. Did not really need the fences this year.
Is there anything foul of anything that we second here? City manager has discretion to.
Yeah, I, I think the main thing, at least from my understanding, you were concerned about, uh, uh, you know. Having it removed by a certain period of time.
I, I will say that I, the first time I went to the Skywalk at the zoo. Last weekend. That would be really cool.
It's kind of what's proposed for the trail.
Would really be cool. Okay, sorry about that. Uh, okay, moving on to commissioner reports, anything from the commissioners to report? Okay, anything from, uh, staff to report?
Um, I am, so I've kind of got through the backlog of, of applications, uh, and. There's only one pending and I, I don't know if they're gonna be forward to that, so that's nice, although I, I am expecting. Um, an application for five units on the parcel, um, just east of. In Creco. So it'll be. This development trimmed out in a long time. There's a number of limitations on that lot. They're putting on us to document background. That'll come up at some point this winter, I expect, otherwise I'm working on the LCP update and.
Okay. Um, with respect to future agenda items, uh, we still have our current list and we did put. Oh, it was back in July, it didn't really, this isn't going to acknowledge, is that, or that, but yes, is that. Any comments or questions on that or any additions? Okay, hearing done then, I don't think there's any other business here tonight, so we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.